Is everybody ready? We'll begin the meeting. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. We have a loud crowd here this evening. We have a full agenda. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, May 27, 2025. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Johnson.
Here.
Motley.
Here.
Paulson.
Present.
Yandich.
Present.
Buck Snyder.
Here.
Freely.
Here.
Coffey.
President. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council meeting. You may do so this evening. As you come forward, I want you to like to turn the light on to green, state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council chambers. If you're here representing a group or organization, I would ask that you please assign one representative to come and speak on your behalf. So, thank you. Sir, welcome to the council meeting. Please state your name on the record and welcome to the meeting.
Greg Lency. I'd like to first encourage everybody who's here or listening to watch the Tuesday meeting of the council on the 20th and specifically about the bonding representative that came in here and the discussion that took place between councilors. He gave us a clear message on Tuesday about what our bond rating was, and that rating that we have is the lowest possible rating in the scale for bonding. He also stated that anything below that is a non-investment grade bond rating and that many investors at the current rating we're at will not buy our bonds. They won't purchase it. It's too risky, and there's so many other cities and bonding capabilities that they don't need to stretch for it. So, the single most important thing as a council and an administration is to see to it that the finances are and we're on solid ground. Everything in this city revolves around money. There's no other way of getting around it. If you fail in our ability to get money or pay for money through interest rates, we failed, and we're really close to that. We're $119 million in debt. You can find that on page 14 of our 2023 audit, and that's a combined debt of the long-term debt for health insurance, pensions, and everything else. It's in several places in the audit, but the total's $119 million. That's where we are. For the 2023 audit, which is a year behind, so we've since spent $5 million on equipment, we're bonding for Southern Drive for $10 million. We need a bond for $5 million for roof repairs, steam conversion, and 10 months from now, we're going to need a minimum of $10 million to tear up Sixth Avenue. So, that puts us at about $144 to $150 million in debt. So, it's insurmountable for a small town like this to try to deal with that kind of debt. The only way out of this is to make cuts that will save money. The revenue isn't going to come. You can't wait for buildings or houses to be built, excuse me, or companies to come in and make a development. It's too far down the road for that kind of change. If we don't make a change shortly, we're going to be looking at real serious issue here. If that bond rating drops below where it is right now, we won't be able to sell a bond. No one will, they won't buy it. No one will buy it. So, we won't be able to get money. We can't use our cash because it's encumbered in debt for long-term debt, pensions, healthcare, and everything else. It's tied up. Our money's useless. It's already spoken for. So, I don't expect the council to come through with big change decisions on their own. We need help. We need outside help. The bonding guy recommended exactly the path we should take to get help, help, first thing. And we should follow his lead. Our city administrator should be directing us specifically. Suggestions are fine. That's all well and good, but at this point, we need direction. We need serious direction, and we have to make moves. We can't talk about it anymore. I've been here for two and a half years talking about it. It's done. I'm done. You know, I don't know what else I can say. We really need to take action. We need to make some sound financial moves that'll improve our bottom line. You know, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be ugly all the way around, but if we don't do it, the decision will be made for us. We won't have a choice. It's going to happen either way, whether we do it, we can do it on our terms, or we can let somebody come in here and tell us how it's going to be done. So, and the state will do that for us. They'll be glad to come in when we fail and we can't pay our bills and we can't get money. They'll come in. It's a standard operating procedure. You guys will all go away. Somebody else will be running the deal, tell us exactly what to do. You know, that's the worst-case scenario. And I would like to hear anybody defend that that scenario may not play out. I'd like to hear that. I mean, if you think that could never happen, and I'm way off base, you know, I'm going to be listening to the meeting when I go home. I'd love to hear it. You know, I'd love to hear that defense of that position. And I'm going to say one more thing with everybody with Ascension here. My personal opinion, cut your losses, get out of the business of owning buildings. We failed all the way around there, and let's let Ascension move on, and we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lency. Anyone else who could address the council this evening? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lency, I'd just like to remind, I don't remember seeing your, um, your name. That's fine. I don't remember seeing his name on the ballot a year and a half ago, and we are able, you are able to file for city council in a year and a half for the next term. I just want to remind folks that there's always help that we can take, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the city council meeting.
My name is Kathy Katie, and I live in Virginia, and I'm a taxpayer. I concur with everything that Greg said. I also think, I brought this up a few weeks ago, that I think this council needs to reach out for help from citizens that know stuff. None of us know everything, and there are lots of people in this town that know about finances, building, management, and I think what he said is so true, and we, I think as US councilors, need to invite people in that can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katie. Anyone else like to address the council this evening?
Mr. Mayor, could I address Kathy before?
One moment, please. Yes, Counselor Motley?
Kathy, thank you for speaking, and also Greg, who left. I do hear you. There are some things that are in our control, but in my opinion, this isn't the full council. There has been failed leadership in the years past where now we are stuck with a monstrosity of things that are falling apart right now, infrastructure and everything else. I could give you a laundry list. And so, we are trying to fix things with regards to infrastructure and the public safety building that should have been built years ago and whatever, but it was disturbing on what, I think it was last meeting where that gentleman came and told us about the bond rating. It's extremely disturbing and frustrating because, you know, even like, let's say, Counselor Buck Snyder is brand new to the council. I was new a little over two years ago. You walk into this thinking you can try to do good for the city, and then you get hit with a brick wall in your face. So, we are trying. Some of this has happened long before some of us got on this council, but it is extremely frustrating and scary to hear what we did here last week. So, your concerns are being heard. Sometimes what the council has for information, not the public, the public doesn't see everything because they aren't on the council, but we do appreciate you guys coming and speaking. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and address the council this evening? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council. Okay, thank you. We will move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless the councilor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the regular minutes of the meeting that was held on May 13, 2025. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 25-010, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approve passment number 12 to Kraus Anderson in the amount of $1,699,157 for the Public Safety Center project. Item 5.4 is approve the transient merchant license for John Massari doing business as Generous Jerry's Fireworks. Item 5.5 is approve the following travel requests. Item 5.5A, Max Olson, police officer, to attend the Firearms Instructor Ballistic Defense Seminar and Training Center, September 8 through the 12th, 2025, in Glenwood, Minnesota, at a cost of $1,876. Item 5.5B, Britt C. Bennis, our city administrator, Pam Labine, our city clerk, to attend the Region Two Training, June 13, 2025, in Carlton, Minnesota, at a cost of $230 total. Item 5.5C, Stephanie Smith, the newly appointed fire marshal, to attend the Warroad Burn to Learn, May 28 and 29, 2025, in Warroad, Minnesota, at a cost of $347.65. And finally, item 5.6, approve the exempt permit for the Iron Range Rotary Club to conduct a raffle at the Iron and Tremois Event Center on September 18, 2025. These are the consent agenda items before the council today, looking for council action.
Move the consent agenda.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? By Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, appearances. There is no one scheduled prior before the council this evening, so move under item seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1, the clinic lease. And we'll turn this over to our legal counsel, Mr. Brian Lindsey. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we do have this item set for a closed session at the end of the meeting. I can report as an update that since our last meeting, the, Ms. C. Bennis and I have taken the information in the direction from the council. We've reached out to Ascension. We've had some very positive meetings since then, and we look forward to presenting some additional information in the closed session.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is approve the Northeast Emergency Communications Board appointment for the Police Department. This is something we do on an annual basis. They participate in the Emergency Communications Board to coordinate with other departments in mutual aid. So, moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2 is adopt the resolution for the sale property of parcel ID number 0900110-02990 And Jenny, could you give us an update on what this property is? Do we know what that is? Just for the pub certification?
Yes, I believe that's the property that we're looking to have a single-family resident build on.
Okay, thank you. So, moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Buck Snyder. This is the property by Silver Lake. Okay, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3, adopt the resolution to hire independent contract coaches. This is, comes from our Park and Rec Department. We do this on an annual basis for the summer work, summer sports programs. So, moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? By Counselor Yandich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, approve the right of access permit with the Minnesota Department of Transportation at the intersection of Ninth Street North and North Hoover Road. Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley? Is there any further discussion? And so, everybody should already know, for information, is that Minnesota Department of Transportation is remodeling their entire facility over there off on Hoover Road and are seeking some additional adjustments in order to accommodate that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.5 is adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the IRRB Community Redevelopment Grant for 309 Chestnut Street. So, moved. It's moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Freely. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be recusing myself from items 8.5 and 8.6.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose I should preface why, as they pertain to my building.
It pertains to the building that you own. Thank you for that disclosure. So, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one recusal. Thank you. Item 8.6 is adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the IRRB Housing Grant for 309 Chestnut Street.
So, moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries with one recusal. Thank you. Item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, committee, the whole meeting that was held on May 29th, I'm sorry, excuse me, on May 20th, 2025. I'll turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. At May 20th, 2025, last Tuesday, here in the council chambers, Ms. Angie Drake, a business owner of Virginia, was present to discuss her concerns regarding our proposed city changes to the city ordinance for zoning. After some discussion with Ms. Drake, George Illetson from Northern Securities is present to discuss the 2025A General Obligation Bonds and the taxable general obligation tax increment financing bond, Series 2025B. It was noted that the timeline for the project has, the timeline for the financing for the project was moved back to June 3rd being the date with June 10th being the actual date ratified the sale of the bond. After much discussion about our credit rating, what Mr. Lency had discussed, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution of the city of Virginia, Minnesota regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2025A.
So, moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Britt, if I could just interject for one moment. I was incorrect when I referred to the property that we are selling. It's not for the housing project on Silver Lake. It's actually for the Housing Redevelopment Authority for the property they need. So, just a clarification and a correction on that. Thank you.
Mr. Illetson then discussed the bond issuance known as 2025B, which is the taxable general obligation tax increment financing bond, or TIF, for TIF District 7.1, 7-1. It's a 15-year taxable bond for the Uptown Mall project. It was noted that the issuance amount of the 2025B bond is not to exceed 600,000 with an interest rate not to exceed 7.5%. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution of the city of Virginia regarding the issuance of taxable general obligation tax increment bond, Series 2025B.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved to approve by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Johnson. Further discussion? These items are regarding the HRA, correct?
Last one was actually regarding the mall, the TIF project.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Mayor, I just wanted to add, at our local Board of Appeals meeting, Patrick Orent was there and had mentioned that we do need to get a copy of that to him. So, I'm assuming once this is done and signed, that then it will be given to the county for that assessment portion. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Dana Hiltonen from the HRA was present to discuss the information regarding the resolution and the payment in lieu of taxes agreement required by the city of Virginia. The documents that were in the packet was an assessment agreement, which is required by the HRA to utilize the 0% interest loan from the Virginia Public Utilities for the steam conversion at the Washington Manor property. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution authorizing the approval of an agreement to reimburse payment in lieu of taxes with the Housing Redevelopment Authority in and for the city of Virginia and to make an agreement regarding assessments with the Public Utilities Commission of the city of Virginia.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Johnson. Further discussion, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is one of the things we are doing to eliminate costs to the city by selling the Washington Manor to the HRA, where they're much more specialized in housing than the city is. So, we are working on it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Matt Reed from SCH was present to discuss the proposed resolution for professional services for the Sixth Avenue project. It was noted that this, the items that are done for this portion of the project is to get to the point of 30% plans and a cost estimate so that the city can then seek funding and financial questions regarding that project. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the professional services agreement with SCH for the 2026 Sixth Avenue construction project.
So, moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Freely. Further discussion? Quickly, this is the main line that travels right through the entire city. It's the biggest and the longest, and the tributaries along that line is the main line moving forward. It's crumbling and needs, the infrastructure is, needs repair, some additional repair has to be done to the Department of Public Utilities underneath. All those UTOs have to be remediated and remediated, and so this is a project going to last from 2026, 2027, and 2028 for cleanup costs, and it's rather an extensive project from, from the Department of Public Utilities side at the intersection of Third Street South and Sixth Avenue, all the way down Sixth Avenue, past Bohaculla, all the way up the road there to Ninth Avenue. So, it's going to be a very expensive project. It's the project that has to be It's the project that has to be done, and we're going to be seeking opportunities in which to do that. But this request is for SCH, our engineering firm, to give us the best-case estimate moving forward for the thirty percent. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Brian Silber, Parks and Recreation Director, was present to discuss the proposed facilities use agreement with Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association. After much deliberation and discussion, Silber brought forward a contract for the city council to approve. It was moved and supported to approve the proposed facilities use agreement with Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association for the term beginning in the 2025-2026 season through 2027-2028.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? We see Brian Silber, our Park and Rec Director. Is there any more to offer, Brian? Okay, thank you. Moved and supported. Further discussion, Counsel Freely.
Just one public statement to thank the Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association for agreeing to this, to assist us in the revenue that's needed for the building that we're operating. Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Eric Jonison, our deputy fire chief, gave an update on the purchase, the request to purchase two Tahos for the Sprint Medic Program. Those purchases will be reimbursed by the state once the official agreement has come through, and I'm happy to report, we finally got the official agreement signed today. So good timing. So now we can pay for the two Tahos. It was moved and supported to approve the purchase of two twenty-five, 2025 Chevrolet Tahos for the Sprint Medic Program at a cost of fifty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars, seventy-six cents each. Moved to approve.
Moved by Counsel Biondich and supported by Counsel Paulson. Further discussion, just for the public's information, there's a Sprint Medical Pilot Project that was approved by the state legislature. It's going to be operated by paramedics from the Virginia Fire Department. All the costs associated with this purchase and all other costs will be reimbursed by the state under the Sprint Medical Program. So it's fully reimbursed moving forward. Takes a while. We purchased the vehicles. It takes a while for the lifetime to get the money from the state in which to accomplish that. That's been done. Thank you, Britt, for giving one little nudge, and so we're ready to go. So it has been moved and supported to purchase these two vehicles, which we already have in inventory. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Question was held regarding sending representatives from the city council to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference or the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference. It was moved and supported to allow any counselor or administrative staff to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in June or the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference in July.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson and supported by Counsel Freely. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire a maintenance custodial worker for the Virginia Public Library.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Freely. Further discussion? This is a replacement, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the renewal of the miscellaneous lease with the Minnesota DNR Land and Minerals.
So moved.
Support.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson and supported by Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, what was it? Counsel Biondich? I apologize. Okay, we got it right? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, discussion regarding the potential for implementation of a landfill host fee as per Minnesota Statute 115A dot nine two one. It was moved and supported to designate appropriate city staff to investigate and prepare a proposal for St. Louis County fees, landfill host fees.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Box Schneider. Further discussion? This is something we have to, we're trying to recover some of our fees associated with the garbage refuse that we, with cost us, our tipping fees are significant, and we're trying to recover some costs associated with that. In addition to that, it's been announced that WLSSD, who is, won't be able to dump, to deliver their refuse in Superior anymore. And so they're going to come to Virginia, apparently, at least that's the plan, until the canyon facility can be constructed and open for business. That's a concern because it cuts down on the lifespan of our facility. So what we're trying to do is recover some costs, get that in our solid waste fund, prepare for the future. So we'll hope they will be able to investigate that, and maybe that's an option we'll have to consider. The taxpayer of the city of Virginia has a lot of things on their plate, and we're going to try to just recover some costs associated if that's possible. So we'll be working with St. Louis County to try to accomplish that. So it's been moved by, and supported for staff to investigate that. Counsel Paulson.
Mayor, I'm just wondering if this will come back to the Committee of the Whole once you get the...
It will.
Absolutely. And we actually have been talking to St. Louis County Solid Waste Staff, and I think they're going to come to the Committee of the Whole to talk about what's going on over there with WLSSD and all that information.
Because I feel like some part of that discussion could maybe also include seeing our tipping fee. So that's what I'd like to maybe have that conversation. Okay, then, so it will come back?
Yeah, it'll come back. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Britt.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Thank you, Britt. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the 2026 Street Striping Maintenance Program with St. Louis County.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Biondich. Is there any second?
Support.
By Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
A discussion regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations for the zoning ordinance amendments that were referred to the Committee of the Whole from the May thirteenth city council meeting. After much discussion, it was moved and supported to recommend no change to the chart known as 11.13 district regulations and remain status quo.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Box Schneider. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting this as I think that just cutting it off and not having any more discussion about it defeats the purpose of what planning and zoning, and we are trying to do as a city, to encourage investment and folks to move in. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Counsel Johnson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Puffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Box Schneider?
Aye.
Freely?
No.
Motion carries, five to two. Thank you. Next item, please.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution appointing prosecuting attorney Michael Carney as agency account manager.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Motley. Is there support? By Counsel Box Schneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the 2025 solid waste hauler license for Norland Environmental Services doing business as Walters Waste and Recycling Solutions.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve Chapter 11 Land Use Regulations, Section 1102 Definitions, which would be the first reading of that ordinance modification.
I will move the first reading.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve the first reading. Is there support? By Counsel Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Went into closed session at eleven twenty AM for preliminary property negotiations for the sale of land, parcel ID zero nine zero 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 three zero zero three six nine six zero, as per Minnesota Statute thirteen D zero five subdivision three, section one. And we came out of the meeting at twelve oh five. It was moved and supported to direct staff to proceed with the property negotiations as discussed in closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Further items?
No further items. We'll come on item nine, committee reports. Would item ten, commission liaison reports, is there any city council has a commission or liaison report they'd like to provide this evening? Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to report that the library is doing quite well. The Friends of the Library had their annual banquet Thursday night, where the library staff presents their information that is also presented here to the Friends of the Library, explaining where their funds go and the amount of stuff they've done. It was a great evening, and all of our, all of our library commissioners sit on that, our friends of the library, so we appreciate that. Also, the Human Rights Commission met Monday, a week ago Monday, and they will be working hard on future events, including potential POWOs, the local pride event, as well as Juneteenth and a few other human rights issues that they're passionate about. That concludes my two reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Any other reports for, from the council? I see we advertised for airport manager. We're hoping to get one?
Yes, we are seeking an airport manager. If anybody's interested in having a part-time position with the airport, we'd love for you to apply.
Yeah, all it requires is a lot of energy and, and one year of experience as a fixed base operator or some airport experience. Thank you. Item number eleven, department head reports. Is there any department head that would like to provide a report today? I see Brian Silber, our Park and Rec Director. Welcome to the council meeting tonight, Brian, and look forward to your report.
Good evening, council. It is with a heavy heart that I am here tonight to let you know that this will be my last council meeting, at least for the next several months, because summer is here and Music in the Park starts next Tuesday night in Alcott Park at the Fountain. Hope that each and every one of you will come out on Tuesday nights to Music in the Park, especially get these council meetings going a little bit faster so you can get out to the park to enjoy the great bands that we have. In addition, Music in the Park is also on Thursday evenings when the city band is performing at the Bandstand. In addition to that, we have over fifty different public events that will be occurring in our parks this summer, from Land of the Loon to Family Fun Day. All those great summer events that people love here in Virginia are coming back again this year, getting bigger and better than ever, and we hope that you and the rest of the public will join us in our great parks this summer and participate in a fun-filled summer here in Virginia. Thank you very much.
Brian, I have just one question for you. You had notified the council about the project at Monkey Island, about the repainting and the reconstruction and the replanting in that regard might not be done by the Land of the Loon, but we're moving forward. Could you give us a little synopsis about that?
Yes, we will be transitioning to a pollinator garden in Monkey Island there at, in Alcott Park, so that we are attracting all of the wonderful animals and bugs in nature that we are not attracting since we are doing a lot of turf management throughout the park and limiting the natural wildflowers that are growing there. So we're starting to do some pollinator gardens throughout our parks to attract them. So this is working with several different state agencies.
Thank you. I hope there's a way that you can mitigate the mosquitoes, but other than that, we're good to go. Thank you, Brian. Any other department head report in the audience? We don't see anybody in here tonight. I'll move from left to right. Britt, anything from the city manager's perspective? Anything from you, Pam, City Clerk? Jenny, anything you'd like to present this evening?
Just one thing, Mayor. Did you want to remind everybody that beginning July first, 2025, we're going to be increasing our permit fees? That was approved several months ago, and I just wanted to put it out there as a reminder. If you have any questions, feel free to call our office. We're happy to walk you through that fee, permit fee schedule that's going to be updated. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, appreciate that. Okay, would item number twelve, council reports, does any city council like to give a report this evening? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the folks that are working so hard on the construction in the alleys on South Side. They are being diligent and keeping the roads relatively clean and communicating well with our residents. The second thing I want to address is why most of you are here tonight. The city council has been asking for about three years to meet with Essentia and figure out this clinic lease. It's been on our agenda for three years. You can go back and look. It wasn't until early at the beginning of this year, late last year, where they finally engaged us and have pretty much put pressure on this entire council to do what they wanted or else. It's very dissatisfying for me and, and quite honestly bothers me that we're getting emails from some of the staff saying, well, if you don't do this, cancer treatment's going to go away in Virginia. If you don't do this, we're not going to have other services here in Virginia. That's a heavy-handed tactic, that they tried to call us all individually and talk to us privately is not okay. This is city government, we're not allowed to meet with individuals individually for the same purpose. I gave Mr. Shervenek the opportunity after he left me a voicemail in this room at a meeting to say, "Whatever you needed to say to me, please say it now in public." He said nothing. So I want you all to understand that we have been doing our jobs diligently, we have not put out emails to our staff threatening them. I don't understand why, if Essentia was negotiating in good faith for this, why they went to a neighboring city saying, "Oh, we might be interested in building in a vacant lot." That's not good-faith negotiation, that's pressure tactics, and it's not acceptable. We've been giving, they've been constantly questioning our staff and their ability to do their jobs, it's in writing, you can do a data request in emails. Our staff are phenomenal, and they are doing exactly what we told them to do. The answer Essentia didn't like was no. No, we don't like that idea. No, we don't think we should do it that way. They didn't like those answers, so instead of being honest with y'all and telling you they were negotiating and we were trying, they just told you cancer's treatment's going to go away in Virginia. I sent an email back after one of the last emails we got, and I'm going to paraphrase some of it. I've already touched on the negative and misleading information that's being spread, or that was being spread. They, they did not come to us and ask us for stuff right away. I felt honestly that we're being bullied, once again, like they did with the hospital. I remember many, many, many years ago, I was sitting out there, and Steve Peterson was sitting in the mayor's thought, and that is when the city entered into a contract to turn over the City of Virginia Hospital to Essentia and they could run it. And they swore to us that they would honor the union contract, which they did until union negotiations came around. And some of you who have been there for all that long probably remember that that negotiation wasn't so great. So I have very little faith in Essentia Corporation, the people sitting in the front row. All of you are freaking amazing. What you do every day shows zero reflection on the people trying to run your company. About four weeks ago, well, it was probably almost two months ago, my little guy had a mental breakdown and needed to go to the emergency room, and I could not be more proud of the staff that assisted him. I heard just today somebody had to bring in an infant, and everybody there was on top of it. At Essentia, and a quote off your website, "At Essentia, we make sure everyone feels safe and cared for. We respect everyone's different life experiences and backgrounds, and we welcome all patients. Our mission is to make healthy difference in people's lives, and our values include respect, justice, teamwork, and quality." That's your mission? I don't see your bosses following that when it comes to land negotiation.
I may.
Mr. Lindsey?
Counselor Johnson, I apologize for interrupting, but we've got additional business with Essentia tonight, and I don't, I don't think this is helpful.
I appreciate that, but I needed to make sure general public has heard what we have been going through. And with that, I will also comment on it being May is National Mental Health Awareness Month, and what I just did, I needed to do for my own well-being and my own mental health. Sitting in these chairs is very challenging. There's some of my fellow coworkers who are afraid to walk their dogs in town. There's some of them that will, are not willing to talk to people because of how they're being treated. And yes, we sign up to be city counselors, and yes, we agree to lead, and we're not always going to agree with everybody, we're not always going to agree with each other, we don't regularly. But it's important for mental health, it's important for us to take care of ourselves. I have been a proponent of mental health and making sure that we are doing what's best for ourselves, which includes sometimes taking off time, sometimes shutting off phones, and I encourage our staff, especially our leadership staff, that when they're on vacation, just shut off their phone. There's enough people in the city that can take care of the problems as they come up, and I encourage all of you to make sure you're taking some mental health time to yourself at least once a day, whether it's in the morning, or at night, or during your lunch. Take time for yourself to make sure you're healthy, because then you can take of other, of care of other people. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Johnson. I just have one report I'd like to give before we move on to item 12 on the agenda, and that is, yesterday was Memorial Day, a day to remember and honor of those who lost their lives in, in the service of their country. I have, I had the privilege, along with my fellow veterans, to participate in a number of Honor Guard events throughout the area. We went to Virginia, to Forbes, to Cherry, to ZIM, and every single one of those were filled with patriotic family members that were paying tribute and to honor those who served our country. So I just want to thank the following people for participating, those of who showed up for the event in Virginia. It was the most well-attended event that we've had in the last three years. There were a lot of people there, and I couldn't thank them enough for, for taking the time out of their day to spend an hour to honor those who have lost their lives in the defense of our country. So all the Legion vets and the Rock Ridge High School Band, the Boy Scouts, Bob Conan, the softball players, and many other people who took the day before and laid all the flags in every single grave, and, and of those vets who were in the Greenwood and the Calvary Cemetery. So they took their time out to do that as well. So it was a team effort, and we all remember those who served. And for those of you who are sitting in this audience today who have family members that served, you know, kudos to your family for being part of protecting the freedoms of our country and our nation. So, thank you. Any other items that come before the council, under council reports?
Seeing none, we'll move to item number 12.1 is, well, before we go to that, I just want to thank all of you here in the audience tonight for coming in, supporting the company that which you work for. Healthcare is a very important industry for us, for all the residents of the City of Virginia, and for those who are sitting in these chairs as well. Healthcare in Virginia is the largest employer in the City of Virginia. Mining is the engine that drives our economy, but healthcare in the City of Virginia, Essentia Health is providing that service to our residents, and to our businesses, and to all the people that come in from our surrounding areas who are fortunate to have healthcare here. We're fortunate to have, so for you to come in and represent in yourselves and support the important job that you're doing today, thanks for coming. So we will be going into closed session here momentarily with a motion from the council to discuss the preliminary negotiations that have been ongoing with the purchase of the Essentia Health Clinic. So, that being said, we're going to move to item 12.1, is the preliminary property negotiations for the sale of the land, parcel ID 090-0030-0369960. And this meeting will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision three, paragraph one. So looking for a motion from the council to move to closed session.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Bachsneider and supported by Counselor Motley. Further discussion? Counselor Freely?
I just want to say that I always respect the opinions of other people on the council, and Steve knows that I respect him significantly. But I, I want to appreciate everybody for coming here tonight for the issue that you're here for. What you do in this community is the value of far more than the buildings that you're in by far, and I've stated that before. And I want to thank Brian and Britt, who we named as our negotiators, to have that communications with the administration of Essentia Health. And I want to thank Frank and Sam and Gary and Brad for the progress that's been made moving in the directions necessary for us to be able to keep the campus in Virginia and the services that you provide. So one voice doesn't represent all seven, but he's certainly entitled to his voice and his opinion and his perspective, and I respect that, so thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Has been moved and supported to move into closed session. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I would ask you all to respectfully ask you to vacate the city council chambers at this time. We're going to be discussing the progress of the negotiations, hopefully coming back in, in a while. Can't say how long. So thanks again. Thanks, everybody, for coming.